We're all signing the agenda sheet. Ron is excused absent, he's at work in Zurich today. Ron's at work in Zurich today.
And he can't do a phone call in?
Can't come out of the country, we found out. We tried.
Can we take a vote to try and approve all this?
We're gonna do a pledge of allegiance.
He gets sent to Zurich and I get sent to the middle of the Indian Ocean.
Maybe you should've said selfie.
Is there a motion to use that?
Finally modern word.
Ron's absent.
I can't hear you back here, you know.
All in favor?
We can't hear?
If you could see closer. We're gonna do the pledge now. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we have public input on anything that's not on the agenda. Anybody like to speak on a non-agendized item?
It's not, or you just pick up here? We're good.
Wow. Wow, consent calendar.
Oh, with one little thing. I assume that speaker card is not valid because I didn't see any speaker cards.
Yeah, I didn't have any, so we're good.
Oh, I love you for that, Rick.
But, I mean, the whole idea behind the speaker card was to try to make it an orderly meeting. So if we're in an orderly meeting, we're not gonna do speaker cards.
Just that's for you.
When it gets unruly, then we'll all go back to speaker cards.
All in favor of unruly?
You can be pushed over. Okay, so consent calendar, we have director's compensation, our bills, utility bills, and the minutes of the last regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
A second.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have everybody voted aye? Children's Center report.
Oh, okay. Currently the Children's Center, well, currently, not currently, but June, we had, we had, in June, 26 kids enrolled, nine preschoolers, 17 schoolagers. We had $582 in donations, we collected $28.31 in tuition, which, with our donations, was $7,410.31. With our expenses and our standing tuition and tuition, okay, let's see what it is. We only had a variance this month of one, or in June, of $176.92. That was big. We wanted to put a thanks out there and just let everyone know that Specialized Tree Works has done an amazing job of donating their time and they've been coming out every Friday to do maintenance on our property, which is great. We have some exciting things happening with the homeschool community. So in August, we are having a homeschool open house because we are opening our center to homeschooling programs. Laurel hasn't kind enough to put me in touch with some amazing homeschool teachers and we have a program that we're working on and we will let you know more about it next month when we know more about it. Ms. Kelly has one, is going to do a report on our 4H program that's coming up in September.
Absolutely, we will begin preliminary 4H sign-ups in August when we have our open house on August 9th. I've been working with the director of the 4H at the University of California through operative extension. He is extremely excited about working with us to create a new program and 4H charter for the Silverado Children's Center. He has invited us up to Cornell University sponsoring an ornithology seminar to begin with, that's going to be focusing on bird species, wildlife, specifically bird watching, as well as poultry project for our center, which is something that we are really anticipating and preparing space for.
Yes.
In addition to that, he is really excited about learning that we have this homeschool agenda that we're working on and working cooperatively with them. He's also expressed interest in the fact that he has shared with us that he has an entire building's worth of science and engineering and technology programs that will be, once we get our charter up and running, available for us to use at no cost. So we can host 4H field days where our 4H groups from all over the county can come and do science and engineering and technology experiments, as well as working with us for future livestock programs.
We have a regular amount of calls coming in and people scheduling tours, so on a consistent basis each week, I'm giving tours and we're having people enroll. There's pretty much everybody that's toured the center has enrolled in the center. Even if it's just part-time for summer, it's been a, it's been a big increase to our enrollment and so it's going great. Everything's going up and up.
I have a question on the 4H. Would you be keeping animals at the center that would be part of the 4H program?
Actually, we are looking into that. 4H fortunately has a million dollar size blanket insurance policy. So any livestock animals that are affiliated with our 4H program, because it's a 501(c)(3) as well, any donation can be specifically toward that program as far as like barn equipment, livestock equipment, et cetera, that'll all be able to be completely tax-free. And the insurance policy will be added on top of whatever projects, programs we have that are affiliated with 4H at all. So that's, that's the hope, absolutely.
That'd be cool. Chickens number one, huh?
We will have chickens within a week.
We will have chickens within the week.
And laying like crazy.
Three dollars a dozen is what going rate for eggs.
No, you know what, definitely homegrown organic. It doesn't taste any better than that and our kids deserve the best. So that's what we're hoping for.
I'd charge a lot more than that for mine.
No, that just sounds really great.
On the, Scott Breeden and I went to a thing with the OC Parks quarterly meeting the other day and we were talking about, they started talking about deer coming down on a city. I know they're eating my trees and they've never eaten them and been in my yard in 30 years. So I said, you know, we have this, the mini horse and the goat and I'm getting worried that with the deer coming, the mountain lions are coming. They all looked at me like, well, why aren't they in a, a cupboard top already? So I'm gonna ask people if anybody has, I got these six by six chain link panels, put them together, put more on the top, didn't go together perfect, but nothing can get in and get them. So, and I put, I put that stone with the little rebar thing in it and the stuffs fit right in it, so nobody dug under and nobody has been in my pens. So I'm, wanna get it big enough, when I figure we need at least six by 12 and they're only gonna be in at night and the weekend, we might even think about, do we need a one-size-bigger six by?
Motion lights are great to, for that. A lot of times they'll come in and the lights will go on and sweep them out and I think it's using the process of putting in some additional lighting that, that'll help deter as well.
So we need that, I mean, it'd be great if somebody had any of those extra panels laying around that we could do. Connie?
I have a 10 by 10 roof that you can use for this. You need to use it for the top cover. It's, it is missing the corrugated on it, so it's a welded pipe corral roof that I took off. And keep, keep the kids safe, I would be happy to lend that, give that to the project.
Because we could, we could just get chain link and put it on top of it then. Cool, well, somebody who knows what they're doing will get next door and ask for if anybody's got some of that.
Absolutely, Jason was also, the UC expansion coordinator was saying that through his connections through the University of California, there's several brands because we're a permanent stationary program where we're not gonna be moving and leasing property, technically we are leasing, but our program isn't gonna be moving from site to site. He has access to several brands where we can get farms and things and we can, you know, paint it and make it look nice and coordination with the school as well and that would also add a lot more security benefit too.
So, do the 4H kids, they wouldn't necessarily have to be in our enclosed chain link area?
The children?
Yeah, we keep the preschool and the kids inside our chain link fence, but do the 4H kids need to be, could the barns be put out?
Oh yeah, they would be outside of the perimeter of the.
Oh yeah, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be in the direct center. We're thinking, where we were talking about, he also is wanting to do a master program at the center and help us to build like a greenhouse and work with the food preservation and teaching the kids how to preserve their food that they've, that they've grown as well. So, you know, the way that we kinda talked about as far as in that entryway, building up a nice barn area and doing, you know, potential planar boxes that are already existing and then potentially building a greenhouse area as well. And since we have the fully stocked kitchen, you'd be able to take it right in and work with the food preserving and, you know, that'd be an awesome experience for the kids especially. And that would all be protected, it would be a lot easier to get the garden going. We're gonna play enclose it as well because of deer.
That's a different paperwork, procedure for you too, isn't it? If they're not coming into the center, they don't have to be.
If they're involved in the 4H program, they're gonna be enrolled in the program.
If they're involved in the 4H program, they're gonna be on some level involved in the, in the program if they, yeah. So, so if they're not in, on the immediate grounds of the center where our little gate to get into the actual buildings are, they'll still be as well covered by the 4H Lincoln Insurance Policy. Does that help?
We did have, one more thing on the Children's Center, we did have a visit by the licensing agency today, which went very well, a lot better than the last visit. And so we have a couple issues, I've gone through the report completely, but they want us to submit a waiver for co-mingling of the children in the beginning of the day and the end of the day, so because of our teacher's status. They want us to cover the water in the pony's corral. I don't know how we'll, for the goat, I don't know how we'll do that because sometimes, you know, how are they gonna get to the water, they don't drink by, I'll keep a glass of water kind of thing. But I do have some waters that I'm gonna donate, if we can hook up. Yeah, we can hook up so that they can get their water. And then they looked at our fingerprinting, which we were able to produce all of our fingerprinting up to date, which was good. And then I think there's one more issue related to incident reporting, which we are on file, we have all our incident reports in process with Capri and we just have to submit them to the licensing agency when they're complete. And that was it? And, so we got a really good survey.
Was that the state or the county?
That was the state, yeah.
Linda, just FYI, with an automatic water, you can't just hook it to a hose, you'll be busting your hose and have a very muddy area. So you're going to be looking at installing some form of hard pipe to install an automatic water. And the smaller animals have difficulty with the push ones, so you're gonna want one with a float and then you're gonna have to keep an eye on it for dead mice.
Yeah, I have about 20 to extra ones with all the piping and everything, so I could be generating those. Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with how they work, so, but that's a good point, so have to watch for that. Okay, thank you Connie, that's great.
Jane?
Just one, Jane, you might keep an eye on that water. I try to watch it as much as I can when I'm there, but I took 10 dead fish out of that water bucket last.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I took 10 dead fish out of that water bucket last weekend.
We, we had, no, no, we had vector control because we need standing water for over three days. Even if you're, you know, continuing to add in water, you have to, they put in special vector control fish and I use it on my horses at home, or my, my horse and my cattle at home and it's not, it's not an issue.
Did they all die?
But they, you know, they absolutely, that doesn't need to be maintained. They do die and like they reproduce as well.
Right.
They usually don't have to continually keep coming in. But it helps with the mosquito larvae that grow in there because of the malaria issue. I think that's what the covered water is.
So, when we get the, when we get these waters? So, just to be clear, you took out 10 dead fish?
I dumped the whole water bucket because I just thought whatever's in there, you know, anything that builds up in there, I had no idea there was any.
Yeah, those are for vector control, so.
But they, it was all dead, they were all dead.
We'll have to call vector control out and we might wanna.
Let's get your waters right away because they're. Are they placymus? Are they placymus? The little sunfish?
Yeah, there's vectors, we have vector control. It doesn't affect the livestock at all.
Yeah. So yeah, we do use those for vector control and chain stuff. But in the future, if you guys, if you guys do that, if you could just communicate with our volunteers who are helping us out, that would be great.
Absolutely, we have netting too, then we can all sell for, so you don't have to.
Okay, thank you.
Are we finished with the Children's Center?
That's all we have.
Any more stuff?
The advisory committee is, has that been opened up to community members as well as in the past?
We have, they have a list of advisory positions and we've asked some people to be on the advisory board, but the plan is for them to identify people in the community that meet the requirements. And we have not, I think they have not started the advisory committee yet, it's planned to be started in September. And we do, oh, you might mention the open house, right? Is it coming up? Yes, we have two open houses in August, the community open house and then the 4H homeschool open house.
And the dates are?
August 9th for the community open house.
What time?
We're looking at 11 to 3. That's a Saturday. And then on the 14th, it's a Thursday and it will be from approximately like 3 to 7. Oh, we changed it to the 20th. Thursday, same Thursday next week, from 3 to 7. 4H will be, they will have a booth there and yeah. Yeah, homeschool.
So how would the homeschool thing work? Do you have any plans or do you know what's good, what's good for us about it?
Well, they wanna pay us money to use our facility and then they would be able to, we would be able to provide childcare for the little children who are not quite yet in the, in the homeschool program, the preschool kids.
The littles.
The littles. And then also, it would just, it would just feed in, so home, like you enroll your kid in the homeschool program, they come, get their homeschool classes there, then they're like, hey mom, I don't really wanna go home, I wanna stay and hang out. So then they come for, you know.
Or they wanna potentially be a part of the 4H programs and, so that could be, that would be a feeder into, you know, if they're, they're dropping off.
Great, cool.
And we've already had a pretty high interest, I think.
Are there a lot of people, are a lot of people in our area that homeschool? Because I don't know anything about it.
I believe there is a, a pretty high percentage of community members around here.
For the size of the community, it is a high number. And there are also homeschoolers in North County that can come in by Canon and South County Mission Viejo, Rancho sort of Margarita, who drive through all the time. We have a homeschool park day at Irvine Regional Park that's associated with Farmer's Market there, so homeschoolers go and we get into the park for free, we do our socializing every week, we support the local community by buying agricultural products and supporting local businesses. And those people, a lot of them drive in from South County, so they go right past our community center. So it's a great way to open up this wonderful facility to the community.
I had a meeting last week with two women who have a company where, that provides homeschool classes and workshops throughout, in numerous counties. I was very impressed with them and they were very impressed with our facility. So we're looking forward to working with them, they sent me a proposal and still reviewing it and then we're discussing and then we're gonna go from there.
So they'd get part of the older kids' building?
Yes, they would get the school age room.
Okay, and we've got two rooms in that building. So we use one and we don't have a problem if we don't have enough.
We'd be doing our preschool program because I believe the homeschool would be going on during the typical school day. So then in the afternoons, when our regular kids get out of school, they'd be coming in for after-school care and we'd still have our preschool program.
And we have two rooms, so if we got really busy, we could have.
Yeah, we have three rooms, technically.
Well, one's preschool.
Yeah, the preschool room, the school age room, and then kinda the mixed-use room. And they, when I said to you guys, are we gonna need to bring furniture or a desk? No, it's absolutely perfect the way it is. So they love the environment. It's, after reading their philosophy, I think it's very in line with what we're trying to do and what we, you know, what the Children's Center, kind of their philosophy, so it's all very hands-on and, yeah.
I have one last question, how is the summer camp? I haven't been around, so how close is summer camp going with like field trips for the older kids and stuff? Have you been?
It's going good, we haven't done a lot of field trips because we.
Because it's that kind of a year, it changes all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but everyone's having a good time, we've got a lot of exciting things going on in the tree in the back, playground. Our tree, our archery range, yes.
A new mud pit too.
Our mud pit.
Which is very, very cool. We did mud pit in the back for the older kids to use as a stake.
So would you say like maybe once a week, you guys are doing summer camp field trips or is it less than that?
I would say at this time, well, last week we did a field, do we do one or two?
One to two?
Yeah.
Are they, are they kids generally younger or do you have any older kids?
We have older kids.
You do?
So, make it positive every month from now on.
It is positive. Oh, July, like, I can report July to you now, July is phenomenal compared to June. We're reporting on June, so.
So June didn't have summer camp going?
June only had two weeks of summer camp.
So better this time?
Oh yeah, most of them. And a lot of, we got a lot of positive responses from our marketing campaign, thanks to Lisa, all the signs we have out, our Groupon went big, so, yeah.
So we're gonna be cash positive in July, is that what you?
That's what, that's what we're hoping for, it's not gonna be 166 variance, it might be, you know, 25 cents variance.
Are you still considering that original idea of putting a banner in Jamboree once there's a corner that's freed up?
We have a banner at Jamboree and Chapman.
Oh, there is?
It's a green, it's one of our green ones, so it's not our bad one. One of our banners was vandalized, so.
Oh, I haven't gone by there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're actually, I'm looking at purchasing a couple more, because one of ours was.
We get a lot of.
Let's see.
The one that's down off Glen Ranch, right?
That one's taken down too. That one's taken down, yeah.
We're getting a lot of.
That's city, that's city over there and they'll take down completely.
They contacted us and they said, hey, we took your plant down. So, so they offered for us to come take it.
That's nice.
Yeah, which is better than the one that somebody spray painted across, so.
Can we go to the city and ask them for permission because of our needs?
Yes, I actually have an appointment with one of the principals from, I think it's Portola, to meet with her regarding advertising on the school campus. I'm just, she's on vacation, so I'm waiting for her to.
Portola is like one of the largest elementary schools in South Orange County too, right?
Yeah, and it's one of the, it's the closest to us, so, yeah.
We had that for a good two weeks before they took it down.
Yeah, yeah, and we've, a lot of the calls we've gotten have been, hey, I saw your signs. So, the signs are definitely, have been a problem.
So the people are coming down Glen Ranch and it was right there in front of them? Do we think they're going left or right?
What are you?
Fifty chances. I'm just thinking, you know, so we just move a block out of Lake Forest and put the sign up in the wishes?
No, I think what we gotta do is just move it across the street on the dirt. We gotta stake it and move in the dirt. I just gotta wear a couple more.
Well, there's a spot where Glen Ranch comes out on El Toro, I had a banner for the chili cook-off and nobody took it and then the, who, the, the, the hoedown had one there too. Both of those survived, I don't know, that might be county, I'm not sure. But it's an alternative spot.
Yeah, the county was nice enough to contact me and say, hey, you have a sign posted where you're not supposed to, so you can come take it up from us.
The city or Lake Forest or the county?
It was the county, I believe.
That should be city.
Yeah.
I thought we could like sneak it over to the county and they might not care.
We could sneak signs everywhere we want.
The county doesn't care. The county works off of complaints. The city, the workers will go and take it.
Well, they took Garzian Hillside Montessori down, so, yeah. But we've also had other signs that we've put up that have just gotten Mr. Ishimis.
Yeah, have you contacted the homeowners association over there? Because you can go and put signs up on all the community centers that they have. And that, that was affected with Fire災 council, so you might think about that. They're a little, like all homeowners associations, they have their rules and rights, but if you contact them, they might let you do it.
I put a bunch of signs when you come out of like painted trails and the different, I've put signs there and some of them survived, some of them are still there.
People really notice the ones with the arrows, with the arrow on them. They've been getting a lot of.
Well, that's, the whole idea was to see the big sign and then go, oh, that's okay, the school's that way, the school's that way.
And get you keep thinking, so.
Yeah, they're like, where's that going? And then, yeah, oh, there's another one, so, yeah. The signs have been, are, it's been a big, big. Plus Craigslist, we posted on Craigslist and we've gotten some interest from Craigslist too.
Yeah, speaking of signs, everybody know why the one isn't of it Medeska anymore?
Yeah, because somebody vandalized it.
Yeah, they've sprayed painted Janet Lang's last name on the sign and I'm guessing it was someone from over here, because when we have lazy day over there, it's at her house, I don't think anybody would do that, that goes, actually goes to her house, so not using anybody, I'm just saying it was really poor taste.
I spoke with Janet about it and she thinks, she seems to think that it was someone that was kind of.
Unrelated.
Yeah, it was unrelated to any animosity or anything.
How would they know her last name though?
She's got kids that are in the right age.
I'm curious about the horse program, what's happened with that?
Horse camp. Horse camp ended Friday of last week after our first session.
Week before last?
Week before last, sorry.
You were at the.
I've been at the OC fair, my, my head is exploding. It went, it went really well.
Well, we had three kids in that session.
Three kids in that session, we have four kids in the next session. Is there anything else you wanna know?
There's another, there's another session coming up, August 4th, August 4th.
So we need more kids to come.
Yeah, so if anybody has any more kids that wanna come.
Is that at Carbondale?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Did it work, did it work good having it at Carbondale?
Yeah, actually it was, it was really great, the facilities were amazing, they had a lot of space, a lot of room. Marissa connected us with two of her trainers to assist us with the camp and they were very knowledgeable and excited to work with us, so. Yeah, we're gonna work with them in the future, is, yeah, I talked to Marissa too about that. Yeah, good.
Did you have to hire the teachers or was that a volunteer thing? Was that a moneymaker?
It turned out to be a moneymaker, not as much as we were anticipating, but it was great with the numbers that we had as a, as a first camp, just to kind of work out the pieces that we needed to get worked out and, okay, well, this didn't work, let's kind of work with it. As far as the schedule went, I think everything went great, the kids felt really confident and happy by the end of the week. They, they made leaps and bounds, it was really great for kids, they were very excited about it. They learned a lot. So I, I think all in all, it was a success. We did compensate the trainers, but it was minimal by comparison to what the center made over it, so.
Did the kids come in like not knowing anything or they already knew something about horses or?
Two of them had, I would say, limited knowledge.
Two of them had limited knowledge, one had, had never been on a horse before. And so, you know, we worked with them to their, to their ability level, we worked with them on the bareback, working completely bareback and in the saddle, so they got the experience of both. I think by the end of the week, most of them liked bareback the best because who wouldn't? But, yeah, it was, when they, they got to that, we walked.
Also too much more.
We walked through the, yeah, we walked, it is, really. We walked through the barns and they knew, and by the end of the week, they knew all the colors, they could identify, you know, all the different categories of horses. So they, they learned some of the very basic anatomy, which was the goal. They learned parts of the saddle, parts of the bridle. So I think all in all, for basically, they learned all the, all the tack, they learned all the grooming equipment, they groomed horses every day, they took their part. They took their part in helping with the horses as far as cleaning their stalls, cleaning their waterers, basically learning how they might take care of their own horse one day, which I think they all would like to do.
Yes, oh, they're in all that parenting, oh, no, that's a new horse.
Exactly, so I think all in all, it was a success. The kids all loved the success with them, really, so that's important.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Marissa's here. Did you have fun?
Yes, a little bit, I was there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, Silverado Children's Center, progress and decision to continue support.
So, yeah, um, I think that we talked about at some point taking a vote. We said that we would continue to support it until June. So I think that we're, now we're in July and we have to take a vote to continue to support it. So, um, I would like to make the motion in light of the fact that last month was cash positive and this month is only a hundred and seventy-six ninety-two in the negative and looks like next month is gonna be pretty positive to continue, um, to support the Silverado Children's Center program.
Is that indefinite then or to the summer or whether we agree?
I would say for at least six months. That gives a, an opportunity for these programs to...
Well, I, I would...
Let's have a sec. Well, I think we need to have a time on it.
I do, I think we need to have a time on it. I, I think that, um, it needs to be positive. It needs to be cash positive. And we are getting that way. I don't wanna make it indefinite.
So six months are reasonable?
Six months.
Three months?
So, well, September will be early because you will, when, when does school...
Why don't we base it on Paul's...
Yeah, we will have to say, you're right, you're right. We'll have to go through, I think we should say through the first, you know, semester, right? Wouldn't you say through this, the, because if we struck, uh, go three months, we'll be over, um, into the first semester.
So winter break.
We have to go to at least winter break.
Oh, based on Paul, uh, sign up?
Just second, Brett. So, what do you think of it for now?
I'm saying six months. We're, we're looking at August, September, October, November, December, and January. And that gives, I think that gives them a positive look at these programs to say, we know we've got six months to work this out. I think in worst-case scenario, the way this thing is, it looks like it's stacking up.
Okay, well, pick, pick the date and then let's talk.
Okay, I make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to support, continue to support the Silverado Children's Center through, uh, through January.
So it ended January?
Yes, it ended January.
I'll start.
We have, oh, now we have a discussion.
Now we have to talk. Okay, so that will get, who knows, there are kids, does that get them through the spring break, semester break thing for the spring break?
Their winter break.
A winter break?
Their winter break.
And that's a semester break?
Yeah, and the semester usually is like end of mid, end of January, but it'll get them through the break. And if they wanna go for school break where they have two weeks to find somewhere new if they need to, that would be, you know, December.
Winter break would be the best time.
That would be winter break. Wait, for semester break, I don't know if that's as good of an idea, which would be a...
When is winter break?
Whenever the school takes a break, yeah.
Well, I think we're gonna know by then.
Typically, the end of the last week of December and the first week of January.
I think, I think we're gonna know by then and probably...
Oh, definitely.
I mean, we're saying we're gonna support it because there is, according to Title 22, you do need thirty days' notification and those kind of things. So we probably look at making another decision in December based on, um, the school year.
Exactly, that gives us a month to, to make the change.
If, you know, we have to do something to revamp our program for the next semester or dissolve.
What do you think?
Is, is the board protected in that decision that if some stranger, which happens, they look, you try to strike again, we just tie six grand a month at the end? That we, we could have a special meeting, we could still, we could still protect the asset.
I would say that if anything, if anything, for matters of insurance and the financing, we're sort of on a path now. If he sees something falling off, then obviously we have a special meeting to make a change. That's an emergency situation. But at this point, the way I see these programs going, the enthusiasm, the fact that the place is fixed up, people get, people wanna know it's gonna be there. It's not, well, we'll see you next month, maybe. It's, they wanna know. So I think, I think that's a reasonable request to take it with the chairman.
I, I think it's going very positive. I mean, we haven't seen this, you know, pattern in years.
And all of our new families are, people are very impressed with the place. And again, a lot of it goes back to, we didn't even know you guys were here. So...
So I, I don't... I think, too, if you guys, if it's important, I mean, it's more than that, we could get a spreadsheet from January to present showing, you know, what, what our income is and we can provide, we can provide some sort of charting, so.
That would be great for the next meeting. Just to show the trending, that would be great.
We all hear what we're doing each month, but if you see January, February, March, you know, and then all of a sudden you have some semester to lose, I think that that's, you know, it's a nice comparison and that's easy enough to do.
Have you already started asking for it?
Tim, you're next.
Oh, uh, I think I'll probably ask the same question. Uh, if you wanna support it through, uh, January, that's great, but a good indicator is what your fall registration is gonna be. I mean, if you don't, if you don't get enough bodies, uh, on opening day or a week prior to enrollment, you already can pretty much tell where you're gonna be come January. So I think maybe supporting it through January, as long as the fall enrollment numbers look favorable towards a positive flow in January. If, if you don't get the numbers come fall signup, you're kidding yourself.
Right, no, that, that's what Tom said, if there's an issue...
It's changing upon a trend of, for, for...
Well, but again, right now, these are all summer programs. How many kids have signed up saying, I committed that when school starts, my kids are gonna go to your school?
Well, we won't know until August when we have the...
The open houses.
Open houses. And we did agree to take a vote, uh, we agreed to support it through June in the group, so we have to take a vote to continue. We can always go back and have an emergency meeting if we got zero enrollment in August.
Connie's next.
I, I'd like to underline, as the community supports keeping the school open, and we would encourage you to go to the January number to give these programs time to firm it, stand on their own, because there may be some hiccups, there may be some, I've gotta rearrange my thought process. There may be some road bumps, um, so I would strongly encourage you to take at least the January date.
I would agree.
All right, Brett wanted to say something, is he right there?
No, took it all the way.
Okay. All right, any other comments before we vote? Yes?
I just wanted to comment, I have a preschool-aged child. And as some people here know, I have, my twelve-year-old went to the program, my eight-year-old went to the program. But there's been so much sort of tumult and turmoil around the children's center, I was waiting for the dust to settle before I was even interested in coming and talking to them about, you know, is it, like you said, is it going to be a continuous program? Because if it was, I didn't wanna get him all excited and get him started and just have it shut down. So there, you know, we want to be able to portray it, something that is gonna be there. And so I strongly support you letting it, give, give it some time to flourish.
And on the same note, the, the givers that are gonna make these things happen have to have a green light, too, so.
Right, yeah.
So it, I mean, it's, it's working like we kinda hoped. It didn't look very good for a while with the finances, but, you know, it's so far so good, so we'll, um, we'll keep going. But don't, everybody you know, tell them about the place, because we need more kids and if we have more kids, we're all gonna be great.
It's got a lot of support over the last few months, which is really, really pushing it and keeping it going. So we need to keep that sense of urgency and keep going because it's, it's really working, yeah.
And thank you, I see, when I come in, I see everybody helping and thank you to everybody in the community that is so helpful because then we know it's there for the kids. Thank you, everybody.
I have a question on fundraising. Are there any planned fundraisers for the children's center in the coming months?
Not at the moment.
Um, well, Dennis and I were planning, but we were, we were kind of waiting for your committees to get started again.
The dog.
Yeah, the dog.
Dog show.
And also, I did talk to Carl about having a dinner, um, at his place, so we're gonna have a wine pair dinner for the children's center. So we are planning at Carl's place, yeah, and he agreed to that. So, and I have the chef, Jacomo, my chef is gonna, um, you know, volunteer his time and, and so we, we have, we have something planned, it's gonna probably be, uh, end of September or October. And also for, um, the, at the Laura's House event, which, various is another issue, but we're gonna have a petting zoo with our animals at the Laura's House event and we're gonna have donations there. So we have a couple events coming up.
Yes, our goal is to survive off of our tuition on, on January 3rd.
Good, and, yeah, and, um, we do have some plans, um, in, in the hopper to make some money, so.
And we're getting a lamb.
We just cooked a lamb.
That's your own lamb. Yes. I could ask for my own, here, we asked for my own lamb.
All right, so, uh, on our motion to support till the end of January, I have a motion by Kern, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So all aye. Okay, item number two, this is more kind of a report. Um, Megan has sent everybody, Megan and Ron sent everybody copies of the five years of T and L's. And so I s, so I asked everybody, you know, look at them, I know our display is over when we do it, but, um, I started going over it and then I realized what we really need is we need the background that's in QuickBooks. So do any of you guys have QuickBooks?
Um, I have QuickBooks, but I do not have, I don't think I have the current version that you guys are using. And that's what I've always asked for, is, is the detail of this, because it really doesn't...
It doesn't, it's not as helpful.
Do, and what we really need to do is have a meeting and go through the detail and work, either work with Megan or work with somebody on creating a budget.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. And Ron started it, he has the budget and they look good.
I just want all of you to be able to look through all the line items and say, you know, well, what if we cut some of this out so we have somewhere to spend there or vice versa? Or how is, how are their taxes? Because we, we got about sixty thousand in taxes last year and I, I think we were planning on seventy, but we're within our budget, you know, we're not overspending, but I'm just not...
Well, there's really nothing there, I mean...
But to be honest, from what you said.
Well, but, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty basic. I mean, you're talking property taxes, I mean, but, I mean, there's some rents and concessions is, you know, that's some pretty big numbers. What is that?
No, I, I'm more interested in, um, the next line that's right over here that shows like a fifty thousand dollar item, which is other taxes. So we need to know, is that every year other taxes? Because one year we didn't get any. I think the first year we were on the board that, you remember that, Bob? That other tax thing went away and we got zero that year.
No.
That could mean as far as that is.
Ladera ranch?
Ladera ranch? I don't, I mean, how would Ladera ranch go to zero and then it came back? So it might be it was a bookkeeper and we got it later, but that's what we have to do.
I think some odd things go on within the county system. They're collecting the taxes and they don't always get transmitted when they should.
Yeah, so what, um...
I, I, I know what I look at every day and I know what I wanna look at and this is not it.
I'm pretty, I brought the new version of QuickBooks, so I think I can make an old backup copy that you may be able to use. I'll, I'll try. And if you wanna come over, we'll get it up on the computer and then we go through item by item. So if you ever have a break with your mom's home at home, or not, same for you, so we can go through item by item, but...
We can't have a meeting all together?
Well, no, we can, we can have a special meeting, well, maybe we'll get...
We can have a special meeting, but we'll have to notice it.
Right, well, we get Megan, if we get Megan to come with the projector, we can put it all up on the board so everybody can, can go through item by item, so if I do want...
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, next item. Information item, there was a lawsuit filed by Jenny Scott against the S M R P D for wrongful termination for an amount unspecified over twenty-five thousand dollars. And our attorney and insurance company are handling this, uh, both insurances, the work comp and the liability. So, and that's all she said that we can say about it. So, information, you can't talk. Uh, next item, Chili Cro...
I have a question about that. How come that's not being handled in closed session? Why is it with the public?
Because it's a public...
Bringing this to the board?
Because it's public information for the whole community. If we were gonna talk about it, we'd have to go in closed session, but that would be with the attorney. Comes and we'll make a decision or...
Okay.
So just, that's all we, there is. Okay, next item.
Which we may have a closed session.
Yeah, we may need to have closed sessions. Is Dennis here? Dennis McCam?
No.
So Chili Crookoff, Dennis and the whole group, do you guys help? Linda, you run the committee?
Yeah, we were there, it was fun.
They went to Derweiner Schnitzel and they gave the...
That little man crew.
Went to Derweiner Schnitzel with, uh, the kids had a day out and there were probably about ten adults. We have pictures, the register said they'll put the picture in the paper, so.
Awesome.
We tried to cite the picture so Derweiner Schnitzel logo is right in the picture, We tried to cite the picture so Derweener Schnitzel logo is right in the picture, so maybe they'll get some ads on it, and the guy seemed really happy, I don't know if he gets them all the time or not, but he was gracious about it, and said whenever we needed help, he'd come back.
Maybe he'll come to the open house.
It was, it was a cool thing, yeah.
Jaco did ice cream films.
It was very good, I enjoyed it.
Very messy.
They were very messy, everybody was covered. Next item, we have an election announcement, this November on your ballot for everybody, there will be three four-year seats open, and one two-year seat that'll be up for election. And you have about till August eighth to file and run, and Phil sent out a thing, and Judy sent out a thing in next door, so if you click on those links, it takes you to the place, and it gives you everything that you need to know, and so we need- The information's incorrect, by the way, on, upstate county, on that, because it doesn't have the two-year on there, it just shows three positions. So, yeah. Lindis, Lindis' term's up, Tom and Ron and my term are up, so, everybody-
Great job, you guys. So far, great job, thank you.
So anyway, go out and beat the bushes, get people to run, the more the merrier, is my thought. Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how that's also-
Okay, next item, is job descriptions for officers, and I would like to add agenda preparation to the duties of the secretary, so I wanted to see what the secretary thought about that. But that doesn't mean you have to do it, well, not Bev, not Bev. So Tom's been-
How do you feel about that, Bev?
Tom's been doing the, Tom's been doing the agenda, but since he became treasurer, he's like running out, Ron's been doing the agenda, so. He said he'll still post it, he'll do the MailChimp stuff, but he's running out of time to actually, you know, get it, erase last month's information, put the new ones, make sure the dates are right. So, we need to assign it to a board member, now, that doesn't mean that the board member has to do it, because we all need everybody in the community's help to volunteer, so.
I was wondering, I thought it was a duty of the president, but I couldn't find, did you find anything in the, the written policy that we have?
I thought it was gonna be a duty of the secretary, and it wasn't there either.
And none of our duties are, I mean, well, the duties of the original policy have been hired out also, you know, we've got a caretaker, we've got Ben, we've got Megan, so, you know, they're kinda spread around, and so we kinda just pick up where somebody else isn't, and that's what we do, but I was surprised that there wasn't any, I couldn't find anything in here for agenda preparation. Bob, have you ever seen anything, like who technically is supposed to do it?
So, so we need, Shay needs help if we assign it to her, so you guys need to think about who's good and word, it's really just a word document, you just-
Oh, it's, it's easy to make, it's just, the, the hard thing is the function, I won't read until I hire somebody, I'm in the 909 to post them.
Alright, Bob, I guess I will be doing them for the meantime, but we, we should think about who's gonna do it, decide if we're gonna send all the items to Bev and have them, do you know word?
No.
Okay, so we work on that part.
She does.
She does, so.
Okay.
I think the next one is just a duplicated entry.
I can get special for now, seven on it.
Yes, so seven's just a duplicate of number eight. Number eight, so, CSDA, which is the State Association of All the Special Districts, parks and I guess other kinda districts too, they have a seminar coming up in Fountain Valley in, is it August or?
August, no, it's end of July. They actually have one every, every couple month, every month.
This is local.
Yeah, they usually, they have them every like month or every other month, and I think we should send one of our representatives, one of the boards, to the meetings.
Well, the, the cool thing is they have, they have different training sessions for board members. So that would be the idea, is when it's local and we don't have to spend money to send somebody, let's send them to the stuff. Is it too late for this one, do you think?
I don't think so, because I got, I keep getting some information on it, this one is about elections and registration.
When is this one?
I wanna say, I think it's the end of this month.
Is that one day seminar, or is it weekend?
It's a couple hours, yeah, it's like, starts in the afternoon, it's like four or five hours.
But this one is about elections?
Yep.
But they're, they're held regularly, or something?
They're all around the state, so it's not too far away.
Oh, but this one happens to be in our area.
But they have a lot of them in Fountain Valley.
Do we get points for attending those?
We do get points.
Us, which, for free?
Yeah, one day they sent us, we'd never been, they sent us, send us somebody for free, here's a coupon, so we could pursue and see. Do we, so they, my point was, I knew it was coming up, do we wanna authorize spending up to X number of dollars for it?
Yeah, I mean, here's one that's, would just happen, but just an example, compliance with salary and pensions for public records requests, but that wouldn't be applicable to us, and that's in Fountain Valley, but they have them all the time.
I wanna go to one that's specific to salaries and safety and stuff like that, I wanna do that.
So, should we?
How much are they?
They're not that expensive, I wanna say they're about fifty dollars, about right?
So what if we approve up to a hundred dollars and send?
Send two people?
Yeah. Is there a motion to do that?
I think the motion, we approve up to a hundred dollars for a director to determine the, what's the name of it again?
CSDA seminar.
CSDA seminar.
Wait a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You, Bev, all, all voted aye. And then, can you, can you see?
I will, I'll send you all.
Get, see if we can all get on that list, we might see something that's interesting.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay.
Just a second, babe.
Linda.
Is this another mistake, does that look the same?
Yes, yes, this is the duplicate.
Okay, next item, meeting videotaping and equipment purchase could cost up to two thousand dollars, or what else can we do to save the money?
Okay, here's what's happening, many of you know Jim Fainer, who's kind of a computer engineer, I requested that he look into it, and he prepared a proposal with some information, some equipment, and it was well under two thousand dollars. However, I coordinated with Ron, and Ron had some other ideas, wanted to add something, change something, and so at this point, I'm gonna just table that, because Ron said he wanted to do something else, and I said, okay, you come up with your proposal. So I don't have, at this point, a concrete proposal to present, so we table it.
Well, that's, okay, Linda, you got anything to talk about it?
I think that we need to get at least, we need to see what Ron has to say and get any proposals.
Well, what we were saying is the, is the criteria, what the, what the basic requirements were, that's what Jim had set up, we didn't go out and get bids yet.
And they are up, qualified, request for, so was there a request for a proposal, or a request for inter?
No, it was basically a list of equipment that we think we need to accomplish the task, and then we were gonna go into bids to buy that, but his initial inquiry said, yeah, it would be well under two thousand dollars. So, but at this point, we haven't specified anything, or bought anything, or looked up in, so we haven't got a bid, we haven't got a complete list of what everybody wants, so that's who we are.
Are you gonna add into that the maintenance, or the, like a payment to the person that's going to upload and do all of that?
Yeah, there was a factor in there for someone to, to download and somehow put it on something, that was part of the package. But again, at this point, we play everything in the air, we don't have, we don't have concrete information.
Any word, Linda?
No. And I don't have anything for that, because what I was working on a long time ago was a completely different kind of system, and I like these new ideas much, so I'm gonna want to continue.
Well, what, what I'd like to think about is that we have a system here, I'll get you in a second, we have a system here that's working fairly well, and so I wanted to see, since we are kind of budget strapped, if there was something that we could do to convince Shay and Brett that this could be our official public record, and maybe if she needs a better camera, needs somebody to help her, she said, you have somebody that might help you upload them?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm at my mom's now, and she's got an older Mac, and so it'll have firewire and everything, so I'm gonna work on this tomorrow, but my new Mac at home, I'm screwed with the new, new Mac and all cameras just right now.
So, so, I'm just, let me just finish, so what I'm seeing is that we've got someone who's already kinda doing it, if we can convince Shay and Brett to keep doing it, or Rachel, or somebody-
Well, until, I like, I do like the idea of a, I don't know how the public feels about it, I like the idea of a turn-on system that's professional.
And I, I agree with Shay, I think that, you know, she's got a lot on her plate already, we're asking her to take on secretary responsibilities, and she's, you know, does have recreation as well as safety, and we're doing fundraising for the children's center, I, I think this is something that we need to look at and alter.
The problem with me to continue to do it is if I don't show up, there's no videotape of the, that, that stresses, you know, and I would want there to always be an accurate record.
What, so everybody understands what we were basically talking about, a ceiling-mounted camera with an omni mic, which means it picks up every voice in the room, so if you're in the back, you're just as loud as the table. Wide-angle lens, covering the table, and the front section here, and a sizable chip, I don't know what the size is, that would be able to record up to three hours of, of meeting. And that would be a permanent fixture, or it would be able to be taken down, we had two different options, either locking it in place with a dome, or taking it down and storing it, but in any case, it would record and it would be activated by, from the table by remote. So we start the meeting, we click it on, it comes down, we end the meeting, we click it off, somebody takes the, the chip out, downloads it, puts it, that's basically where we were at. Now, we haven't worked out all the details, on what kind of mic and what kind of camera.
Well, I think that's, you know, that's up in the-
I'll continue to take meetings until there's something else in place.
Somebody else will come.
Well, now, I guess, maybe I can't help it because I'm Park Scots, but if we could do it with volunteer labor and not have to do it with paying somebody, I'd sure be up for that, because that, I mean, that's part of what we need to see, and maybe what we should see is what he's proposing, and then who in the community says, you know, here's three of us, if one of us can't be here, the other one can run it.
Well, Greg, the only difference would be, and if Shay, Shay can do this, that's fine, the, the labor cost, or the, the same, the labor factor would be the downloading. Once we get the equipment, whether we buy the equipment, or we pay Shay to buy the equipment, and whether he installs it, or Steve installs it, what I'm saying, it's all the same. So it's not like we're doubling, we're paying a lot more, it's just who's ever gonna do the service, that's the fact.
Alex, right?
Oh, yes, I was just gonna say that I thought that if we do get someone else, besides Brett and Shay to do it, we have to have three Brit bids, separate bids, come in.
Well, that's what we're doing, trying to put together our, the criteria, so we could put out a, a request for proposal on RFP, and so- So, Jim Fainer's figuring out the criteria, and then we're getting it three bids from there?
And he, he could be one of them, and if it's a certain dollar amount, we wouldn't have to, but I think we'd rather get three bids from now on and everything we have.
Jim Fainer is proposing criteria to us, who will go through, approve the criteria. Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't see why we don't just keep Brett and Shay doing it and get some better equipment.
Yeah, we need an equipment that's not mini DV tapes that have to be changed, because that's the house, and then it would have to be equipment that, that if, for some reason I couldn't come and Brett couldn't come, that somebody else could run it.
Yeah, we need to get a little committee that would say, okay, we'll, we'll do it, who can be there this month, I mean, it should be pretty easy, if it's sitting up here, I think I probably wouldn't leave it there, because it'd be too attractive of a nuisance to walk away.
Well, we talked, Steve, Steve had a, a point, we were talking about having a disasign, or having some type of a quick disconnect on it, he claims it would be better to have a locking dome on it, I mean, that's what I'm saying, this is, we have a-
There's a sealed beam up there too, and Jim Fainer and I pop the, you know, towels and I look out, and I can strap it and knock it out.
The other thing that'd be cool at the same time would be if we could have a projector table, you know, that's either right above it or below it, because then we can project on here, and then everybody in the back of the room can see whatever's going on.
Well, that's a secondary, that's over, that's a-
Well, it seems like it needs some more stress. That was approved along the time of, it never happened.
Okay, alright, tool table, I'll work on that. Okay, next item, Shay and Linda, discuss skateboard park and where you're at, what you need help with.
Well, Shay was, you know, working on skateboard park, and then Steve and I had a discussion a, a week ago, and we were talking about getting the skateboard park up and out there, and Steve and I were discussing it, we said we really need the pavement fixed first, so then Shay and I had some discussion on the internet, just emailing back and forth, and we've already approved the asphalt, so we really just need to get that done. So, is somebody gonna get bids?
Nobody, no, the kids complained that there's no skateboard park, so I'm not asking.
No, but they're asking, but we need to get bids, don't we? Three bids.
Yeah, we do.
Well, we have, yeah, we need, I think what we'll do is we'll get somebody to come in, look at it, and then get two more bids, tell them what, because I don't know what it is.
You guys have to put that up, that's, that's a price.
It's gonna be a big-
People that did the fire station do our road, and they did a pretty good job, and were fairly inexpensive, so we might wanna start just by asking him, who did you use, because they did the fire station and did a good job, and then they did ours there.
We need the mic, the wild, to get this whole thing going, because we have to advertise it, I think, in the paper.
Right, you do, and you can post it down, you don't have to go into San Ana, you can go down to the other location right off El Toro down there. So we need to get the first, somebody come and say, are we over twenty-five thousand or not, which I'm assuming we're gonna be over, and then, we know if we have to go to seal bids or not seal bids, but definitely a whole project like that. Mary?
It definitely needs to be done, especially close to the tree over here, where we set up the ice cream booth, that's becoming a major critical-
We have to coordinate that.
In the basketball court?
Over by the, on, on this end of the basketball court, next to the fence, that value's getting worth, it's getting higher and deeper, it's harder, it's getting harder to make it a safety, a safe place for serving ice cream.
So just so everybody knows, and we give you lots of warning, the poor little trees at the end of the parking lot between us and the basketball court are coming out, because they're the wrong kinda trees, and their roots are raising the basketball court up, and now they're getting ready to raise the parking lot up. So, somebody, we need to be thinking about what are the right kinda trees, and actually, Steve Peterson said he'd help us with that.
And we approved that.
We approved that.
I thought, one of them has been taken out already that was going through the fence, I think, wasn't it?
No.
So, not yet, but it needs to, yeah.
So Shay said that she's gonna talk to Steve and get the tree going, so we're getting the tree going, and then who's gonna do the posting of?
We have to get the preliminary bid figured out, if the seal bids are open, and then what, tells us how hard it's gonna be.
Okay.
Maybe we'll make you guys help with it.
What's your threshold for public bid, twenty-five dollars or fifteen?
I'm pretty sure it's twenty-five goes to seal bid.
I think ours was fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen sounds right to me.
I get, I mean, we could maybe do it in two halves, but that's kinda cheating, so.
Well, that's actually, it's a bid splitting, but what you can do legally is a district can buy the materials, and there's subcontractor waiver, and that's perfectly legal.
Maybe we'll ask whoever we get to bid, so, anybody that knows someone who's done nice, and this is gonna be not slurry, this is like dig the stuff out, fix, fix the tree roots, fix the sub, and put it back, so.
I think we'll take care of the tree roots, it's been cut out already.
Are we talking about the whole repainting job, or just the basketball court?
Both.
Both? Yeah, you're definitely talking about fifteen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I figure it's gonna be way more.
Otherwise, yeah.
Jane?
Can you just try to time it so that it doesn't hit the country yet?
Yeah.
That's October eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah, who, yeah.
Based on our track record-
There's no way that we can get it done by them.
Based on our track record of getting things done, I would-
Well, I'm not saying get it done, I'm just saying, don't be in the middle of it.
Don't tear it up, yeah.
This will happen seven years from now.
I, I think, yeah, we should just try to shoot it.
Getting it done right now. Don't worry, Jane, I'll occupy the parking-
October what?
Eleven and twelfth.
Okay, well, we'll make sure it doesn't start till after or gets done before.
You guys are looking for an asphalt contractor to come in and give you like a preliminary?
We need to know where we are.
Okay, I have a guy at Ben's Asphalt Service, they're, they're really good, and I've been working with them a lot lately, and I'll have him get in touch with, with who, Steve, or?
Steve, yeah, Steve's probably a fast rate.
Yeah, Steve's the most-
Bob, are you dealing with? Ben's?
And the, the people are doing Majeska right now, Majeska Canyon, so I thought as I drove by it this afternoon, I-
That's our J Noble, they're contracted by the county.
I know, I'm like, why don't we ask our J Noble, they're already here, maybe they just do it next week? I mean, I mean, you never know.
That would be the leftovers over with the job.
Well, that's, I mean, I've got leftovers before, that's not a good place to be, okay.
So it's, the skateboard park will not be put in until after the-
Well, at this point, can we just put the skateboard park out there?
Needs to go somewhere.
It's all it's waiting for right now are signs to be put up before we put the ramps out, I mean-
Well, I think it needs to leave this room, and go back, back behind Steve. Okay, and then, you got the signs made, or are they coming?
The signs are here, they're right behind there.
I think you need to fix the parking lot before you do that, so you don't get a lawsuit.
That's what I think, too.
Okay, so we'll move it to the back.
Good point.
Steve and I talked about that, too, move it to the back, and we'll fix the park, get the chair, chair, work on the tree, we'll get the parking lot fixed, we'll get us some people to talk to Steve, and we'll do it after October eleven.
Could you get us Ben's? Yeah, and then, that'd be great, so then we can know where we're starting at.
My husband also did paving for years and years and years, and so I'll ask him, who he knows, because he was public work structure for many years also, so he'll, he'll contact us, so I'll ask him.
Okay, that'd be great. Next item, Recreation Committee, I have all those brochures, I left them at home.
Okay, yeah, we need to start working on our fall and winter brochure.
The summer ones at my house, I'll make sure it gets here and gets distributed out to people.
Kevin is here right now.
Kevin?
Kevin's here.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin, you wanna talk about the fall and winter brochure, what we need to do, where we should go, how much it might cost, so we can approve funds for it?
Oh, probably costs the same amount.
Are you, are you wanting to help with that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Put a meeting together, okay.
What I would like to see is the application attached to it, even if we can do that, because so many people, they get that brochure, and they call and say, well, how do I, how do I get my class in there? So it'd be nice to have just a component of it for interest of people sending something into us.
And Ron's not here, but I've been asking and asking for the current recreation facilities used, contracts to be added to our website, because class instructors and people wanting to use it are calling to get that, and it's not on the website. There's one on the website, but it's old.
I think Lisa used to do that, so, and Steve and I were talking about that, too, and I kind of, you, I saw an email asking Lisa if she would help us with that, and Lisa then emailed me, and saying that maybe she would, so, and now she left. But we have to ask her.
But we have the PDFs ready to go, they just need to be added to the website in order, so he does that, so.
Yeah, good, okay. So about how much, about how much, Kevin?
I don't know, I think you guys got 2,500 last time, and I forgot, Michael made them for like 150 bucks.
Yeah, it was only a couple hundred bucks.
I just did all the labor for free.
What the added thing would you need to be?
Okay.
I'm sorry, you wanted to add something to it?
I wanna add the application to it.
What would that cost?
A link to an application that they can download online or actually fill up, a PDF that's actually fillable, we turn, email it back.
Oh, you're talking about.
How much would it cost, Kevin?
She's talking about one section of the quad fold bean, like a cutoff.
Do you have room, do you?
Yeah.
Well, let's have a meeting, let's still have a recreation meeting and talk about that.
So, so we're not to the point where we need to do funds today, it sounds like?
No, we need to make it first.
Yeah, okay. Next item.
If you wanna approve funds, that's fine, but we don't.
We can talk about the details of the thing as we're gonna lay it out and design it, but I would be for not being archaic and having an actual form you're filling out and tearing off. You just put a section and say, "Application's found here," and have a PDF on your smrpd.org that they could print out, fill out, or actually fill it up, fill it out online.
We already have that.
We need to do a link to it.
We already, I mean, we already do that, but people still ask.
Wait, you know how people get lost on our website?
Some of those ones are.
Welcome to 25 Cent.
I know, really. Well, you know, it's a canyon, they're like, it's simple.
Well, they would have to know to click on the button that says "Facilities," and on that, there's only one application.
Yeah.
And it's not the current one, so, you know, we would need the website to direct people, lay people a little easier. Do you wanna use our center?
We just still go to the regular website, you go to the actual link for that form.
Actual, to the PDF.
You type that in, you click and boom, it's there.
Is it, you know, like, Kevin, they were talking about the problem with them when they're 30 characters long, can we make them, how do you get them to be shorter, or, can you guys work that out later?
What are you talking about?
The link, the link.
Oh, yeah, you can add the link, sure.
Okay, well, that'd be great, okay. All right, next item. I got ahold of Trust Republic Lands, and the guy said that we're free to go do a field trip on the 700 acre property, and so we need to get, I'll put up some dates, probably, what do people think, like morning, Saturday, Sunday, midweek? Anybody wanna go besides me and Brett and Shay and visit? Okay, so, why don't you give me, let's start a little signup page so that I can have everybody, everybody that came to that last committee meeting will add them on today, and we'll announce, we'll put it out on Nextdoor or something, announce what the day is gonna be. I gotta coordinate with Dan to do that, too.
Where are you going?
Thank you, Dan.
To the 700 acre property.
It's the property behind Dan's.
Open space and trails.
Yeah, we're down to open space and trails now.
Are we gonna go four wheeling it?
The property up by the cross, where the cross is.
Okay, next item. So I'll put the date on Nextdoor or Dropbox or, Nextdoor is getting more people, I think.
I don't even need to.
No, it's not.
People's nerves more like.
Okay, next item, Capri Annual Audit Safety Review Response, what have you guys got?
Steve and I had a meeting on, and we reviewed the annual report, we're working on it, and then we're going to finish it and send it to Shay for review. We did get an extension on it from Capri, and it's in progress, that's it.
Anything that they didn't like that we have to work on?
There are a few things, but they're nothing too.
Easy stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, he basically sent us an email, oh, don't worry, you guys are doing a great job, and minor stuff.
But once I, once we get it done, we'll bring it to the community and, and go through it. I mean, stuff like diagrams of evacuation plans, which Steve, I think, already hung up. We have some things, an IA, IAPP, which we've already done, I worked out with Lori, just some very minor paperwork to do. You know, the, I think, the sand and the Majeska.
We did, we did it.
Yeah, we did that.
Can we talk about sand and Majeska? So I know everybody likes it, but if we can't come up with a good rototilling schedule that's doable for you, we need to think about changing to another material. Or do, or?
It's right now, I mean, I went down deep this time, really deep, and it takes longer, but it's fluffy, I mean, it's.
And then we're supposed to add five or 10 yards of brand new sand on top, which would.
On the one side we need it, but the side that's closest to the, to the gate that you enter in, that's, it's still good sand.
Because someone was thinking.
But the stuff that came off the hill, we still have mud trapped in there, so that's.
Do we need to dig some of the mud out and just replace it?
What do you, what do you think on that? Yeah, where do you go?
Just go ahead.
He's the mud guy.
He's the mud.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just thinking, if, I'm thinking we can get a grant for the rubber playground stuff, and if, if it's gonna be too much maintenance for you and it's, or we're not getting to it because it's just not getting to it, then we need to decide, okay, this isn't safe, what's plan B?
Well, the Capri auditor wants us to do a weekly evaluation of all the sites, so if we see that we're having, the sand isn't looking good, and if we have to rototill too many times, then I think it's up to us.
Yeah, so we can just go with one, it should be good for a while, until it, when it rains again, then sign it's over again. It's usually about a week after it rains, it's compacted.
Because when I was talking to Lori at the center here, even the chips were starting, so I think we need to have like, we're gonna.
Well, those things are constantly running, all the time, you know, those can be raped.
They're raped or spayed to fluff them up, because we can't rototill them.
No.
And then the one in the back, it's too high, so we need to build it up. Rick was telling me that the end of the slide is too far from the ground, so.
Oh, is it really?
She isn't even letting the kids go back.
Yeah, they're, it's too high, you gotta build it up.
It's over 2% grade twos, correct, they reckon, they reckon legally, that's not legal.
It's not legal, you can't use.
Those were, those backyard chips were donated, used.
No, I mean the.
The slide, the children's center.
Slides too radical?
Yeah, those were donated, used.
And the, and the.
Rick gave us those.
The pillow.
Well, we dug out the sand and Rick brought in.
So is the transfer station, the whole playground, I mean, not, put it in, looks like it's over 2%, you can't have more than 2%.
The other thing that he said, that the auditor suggested was that we have a playground safety person, so if anybody's interested.
Everybody, what do you think about playground safety?
Rick's gone, Rick's gone.
You can go get tickets?
Okay, so, if you're interested, Tim, let me, you know, about that.
So we still wanna get, Steve, we still wanna get a bid on five yards and 10 yards of sand to present to the board.
Okay, then before we put the new sand in, let's decide if the old stuff, let's let it compact and see where's the muddy part where there's too much mud with the sand, and then let's dig it out of a corner of it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what you really need to do is what we always do, dig it all out, throw it all away, put some DG in there, compact it, and then put your, you know, your soft sand, slow your bid on top.
There's about, there's about a good, good sand on the other side of the, maybe about three quarters of it, that's good.
Because if it's mixed with the mud that came in that debris flow, we gotta throw it all away, so. Sorry, maybe we'll get our safety, playground safety.
Yeah, Tim will get out there and crack away.
I'll hear my son.
Yeah, okay.
For someone to use.
Okay, next item on the list, policy committee, so, you guys, I'm sorry I've been out of town, you guys have been meeting, have you got anything for us to look at, to think about?
Well, there is, we do have a policy meeting, Shay and policy meeting, and went back and forth. The first policy was use of the SMRPD names in fundraising, and there were a few comments. Okay, and so, I think that's pretty much the way Tom wrote it and Betsy approved it, and then we made those changes, sent it, I sent it to Betsy, and she said, "I'd make the last sentence sound more like objective criteria. You may also wanna ask for an accounting of how the logo was used and the money was raised." And she also makes a comment, you need to search, you need to do a service mark for the logo through the Secretary of State's office, so that you can use the mark S in the service. The application is easy, but it requires to have a lot of samples, that's, so that's the only thing, she didn't like that last sentence.
Okay, so, can you guys go work on the last sentence and make?
Well, I think it's just, that's the only one that was added, so if we take it off, which displays responsibility without excessive orientation. So if we leave it the way it was, it doesn't say anything different. It says, "The board may approve use of public, use of this property to public benefit nonprofit corporations or established groups which benefit the area and/or populations served by the SMRPD, which displays responsibility, community-oriented leadership without excessive overhead costs."
That's just what it says here.
Right, so.
Okay, so, so she's made a comment that we need to figure out what her comment means.
Well, she's just saying that it sounds more like objective criteria, to leave it off because it's too objective.
Oh, to leave off the last sentence?
It's too unobjective.
It doesn't need it either.
No, it's too objective. It's, it, I think the last sentence, sentence, sound more like objective criteria.
So a dollar amount?
A dollar amount, yeah.
Per percent or something?
Yeah, it's too subjective, so she's saying make it more objective.
Okay, well, she made two comments, since we're not gonna finish it tonight, how about if you guys take it back and incorporate it and bring it up next month, next meeting? She's making.
It's not really a.
At the center, she's got a comment that I don't quite understand, but she needs to say, pin her down more.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, yeah, we're real close on this, I just have a question on that last statement, and it differs from what originally we have approved.
And Betsy has a comment on it, too, so let's nail it down.
This is, this was the original one that Betsy and I worked, and I tried to make some changes at the policy meeting, these are my notes, but this is the original question, yeah, Betsy approved, and.
Yeah, so can we just approve it like that?
Yeah, essentially, not saying, but it's just.
That looks exactly the same time when it's here.
Well, not exactly the same, it's a little bit different.
All this displays.
A bit nonprofit.
Because it says, "Which displays responsibility, community-oriented leadership without expect, without excessive overhead costs."
That's exactly what the red says.
Which displays responsible leadership of community-oriented, without excessive overhead costs. This is what I thought that was trying to say, because I didn't think that made sense. But they both sound weird in that sentence.
That's your copy.
They both sound weird.
So, Betsy made a comment, let's figure out what she didn't like, or what she wanted, she wanted something like percents or?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing we have to clarify with table and total.
Okay. Okay, next one is the Director of Image Policy.
Linda May was supposed to make a few changes.
Did she, did she go, because you, you had notes on what, on the draft at the meeting, and I didn't take home yours, so I didn't remember exactly what they were, but I liked all of the notes that you had, others in what relation, so.
Yeah, we agreed to add attendance by conference call, in-person, and in-person is considered attending, and then we just added that we would look at, if the Director with excessive absences would be considered, we would look at 50% of the meetings in a rolling fiscal year, 12-month period, a rolling 12-month period. So in other words, if you were absent, absent from 50% of the meetings in a rolling 12-month period, we would ask the person to resign. So it's the same attendance policy that we looked at in previous months, but that's what we kind of reviewed on.
So, my understanding is the law, they can't have more than three unexcused absences in a certain, in a row, something like that, so you're gonna ask them to resign, but you can't force them to resign?
You can't, but we can ask them, yeah. So, I mean, it's here, I can read it to you. Attendance at regular, regular monthly board meetings is a requirement for the position of Director of SMRPD. Roles shall be called at each board meeting. At that time, a vote shall be taken and absences may be excused by a simple majority vote of the board. Each Director's presence, excused absence and unexcused absence shall be recorded in the minutes by name of Director in each category. Attendance may be by conference call and in-person, or in-person is considered attending. Absences may be excused, and then we had some controversy here, but we added, due to death in family, a family member, family or personal illness, work-related reasons, which we had some difference of opinion there, but I said, why even bother adding any of this? They're just excused or they're not.
Okay, work-related reason is a state-authorized excuse.
Right.
That's a state-approved excuse.
Well, the, the argument with that is that there's also another law that's incompatibility of office, if you take office but you have another conflicting obligation that keeps you from doing what you took office for, then, then that's an issue, and so if work-related in there becomes something, well, I have another job and so I can't make the meetings, and it's all covered because it's work-related, then you can have an issue. That was our problem with work-related.
I guess my understanding of the work-related one was incompatible, I got a job here that's incompatible with my work position here, so I might be wrong on that, but that's what I have to look into.
Yeah, I do have all of them, and the work-related is, is included in that. So, inclement weather, accident, scheduled vacations, and unusual and unforeseen circumstances. And I said, well, if we're gonna add, not add work-related reasons, let's take off out everything else and just say unforeseen circumstances and keep it at that, which we talked.
Or we could add another, we could add another definition to the work-related, and not so vague, but like, temp, temporary, you know, something that urgent, you know, not ongoing.
Isn't it kind of a moot point? I mean, if you call in sick, do we have to bring a note from your doctor?
Okay, so three, yeah, three consecutive unexcused absences, five unexcused absences in a 12-month period, or six, we had a can of all of that, and we said, 50% of all the, of the meetings in a rolling 12-month period, we would basically ask people to resign.
Excused and unexcused.
Excused and unexcused.
If you can't make 50%.
Right, we would ask.
And if they say no, you go, okay.
Right, yeah.
Well, I mean, what you need to check on state law, because we might be, we might be giving the people a lot more latitude and all the other excuses.
But it doesn't matter, you're saying if you can't make 50% of the meeting, we're gonna ask you to resign.
Right.
Whether they're excused or not, that, then you're just being very remote for nothing. 50% is 50%.
And if they say no, then you say, okay, well, we'll resign you.
Well, the intent is just to set a precedent that being here is really important because you're here, you know, and it's a.
Exactly, it's a hard job. All that verbiage is just verbiage, it's not, it's not making it any more clear to say, if you gotta be at least 50% of the time.
I think it is making.
Whether it's excused or unexcused, or what's excused or what's not excused, it doesn't matter.
I think it's making it clear, because right now, if somebody's not here, nobody I think it's making it clear because right now, if somebody's not here, nobody says anything to them. But now we're making a policy, now we're gonna have to say something to somebody.
Yeah, no, but that I understand, but I'm saying all that other verbiage about.
Yeah, right.
It's just verbiage, yeah.
Throw it out. So, yeah.
In the back.
I see how what we thought.
50% is way too lenient. 75, at least.
At least, I mean, what are you doing up there if you can't be here more than 50% of the time?
I, I hate to drag you to the personal, but like, has anybody just said to Ron?
Actually.
No, I haven't gotten, I'm not hearing anything. Nobody's said to Ron, hey, Ron!
Ron's work schedule's changed and he isn't missing the meetings that he missed when he first took the job.
Oh, so no, okay, but that's not what I was asking.
There have been, there have been.
We have, we've, I've talked to him.
Okay.
I don't know who else.
And community members.
Okay.
It's been going for.
Okay, I just thought maybe no one had said anything.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I'd just like to add something. Uh, even though Ron isn't at the meetings, and I know that's an important part of our, of our responsibility here, he does a lot of stuff beyond that. So what I'm saying is that the value of someone saying, well, I'm taking care of this on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, but I won't be there for the meeting next week. But what I'm saying is there's a value to all of us that contribute our time and our efforts to make this work.
So, so we're really not ready today to vote on this, it sounds like, because, is that, is that fair?
Well, I think, I think if, if we agree on the concept.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, we can write it a little bit and bring to a vote.
Well, being that we're already going back to the board on the other one, then we might as well.
So, so give this by the attorney, because one thing I was thinking is that, do we, do we want to be too lenient on all the allowed excuses, because if they start adding up too much and the state doesn't say that's a allowed excuse, after a while, we may say, no, we're not excusing it for that absence.
Well, that's, that's typical verbiage for others. And she's seen it already.
Well, I started on that months ago and I ran it by Betsy right off. She thought it should be more strict, but it's up to us. It's our policy.
Well, that, okay, just so we all know, the state law says one thing, so we can ask them to go, but if we can't force them to go, we can't force them to go.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, what does it mean if you're saying you're just gonna ask them to resign?
The, the state law says what we can, state law says when they are kicked off the board automatically, we don't have to do anything. So we're, we're saying we want them to be there more than that, and that's, um.
Let's take them out back like we used to.
That's what this is about, peer pressure. That's exactly the point.
It is a, it's a peer pressure policy.
That's exactly the point, Zach.
Okay, so you guys work on that.
Yeah, we'll work on it. And civility is part of the policy, we're not ready to even close, really just writing it. And it'll be probably a, a one minute, and, um, I think Brett had a good suggestion, we're gonna post it on the board behind us and it's gonna stay there.
With happy faces.
But it'll, well, we're not ready to.
Okay, um, or Directors' comments, Tom, do you have?
I have none.
Linda?
I have none.
Shay?
Wait, wait, what?
Thank you, everybody, for coming to the meeting.
Oh, sorry, did I miss something?
Yeah.
Which?
Moon conduct policy?
Oh, she said they're not ready.
Oh, you're what? I have a question. What's the policy, I know define when the policy means are.
Oh, do you want to?
Well, I raise my hand and is it gonna talk about this thing?
Okay, uh, yes, that's a good point, Tim. What happened last time, and I should bring this up, is the meeting was not noticed. It should have been, we've asked for it to be noticed, uh, because we do have, um, you know, a lot of people that want to come. So I formally asked, we requested, it's in the minutes, and Shay will be noticing the policy meetings.
But clarify, I, I did notice the meeting and it did go to.
The policy committee, but it didn't go to the public. We're gonna notice it as a working meeting.
Did it go? I sent it to you.
No, it did.
To go out.
Oh, maybe it didn't.
No, it didn't, I was, I was.
Oh, you were gone, okay, that's why it didn't go out to the public. But I went to Ron, it was supposed to.
I called Ron, and Ron didn't know anything about it, and by the time I did find out, it was never here. At the market, it was too.
It did not go out.
Why would you call Ron?
For the committee, so it will be noticed. We talked about it and it will be noticed.
Put it on Nextdoor.
It'll be noticed better, because it did get, it did get legally noticed, and I did send the agenda to Ron, and I did ask it to go on the website, which it didn't, and it didn't get posted, so.
How was that?
I did my job to legally announce that meeting, but it didn't go beyond me.
So it didn't get posted on the website?
No, it's not there now. I looked at that yesterday, I couldn't find.
But, um, we couldn't consider it a, a special meeting?
Yeah, because I had heard about a special meeting and tried to find out about a special meeting, and in my time, I got the answer, it was like, well, the meeting's tonight.
Oh, that committee meetings aren't special meetings. Committee meetings are a working committee.
That's what I'm saying, I had heard it was a special meeting and said that was a thing.
Yeah, we need to have it.
But that's insane, it wasn't clear at all.
So here's what I.
Let's be clear about it, because it really needs to be noticed as a special meeting. So, so when you.
That's what I'm saying, when you say notice, you're talking about special meetings, I'm talking about, I'm talking about legal public notice of committee meetings.
No, and I, okay, but I, and I thought it was clear.
So, so something we need to have a policy and policy.
We discussed this, we discussed this in the first meeting about policy, and I really want to be clear about this. There are gonna be more than two Directors there, so that when two Direct, more than two Directors are there, so we can all talk, it has to be a special meeting. So Shay, when you notice it, will you please notice it as a special meeting?
Does the Board want policy meetings to be open to the entire Board and?
And the community.
The public will get a special meeting notice of a policy meeting?
Yes.
Do you guys care that much that it, that it is a?
It's not a committee.
A big.
Yes, not a committee.
Okay, that's great then, okay, that's what we'll do.
So, I mean, the reason I think it's valuable is, we could have talked about all this stuff today, all of us that weren't in the meeting were already up to speed and we could have voted on it tonight. So for something as important as policy, I think the whole Board needs to have the opportunity to go.
And the community needs to be advised.
Well, the, the community, and let's, maybe we should just use the Nextdoor to send it out. Does anybody know how many people are in it?
Well, that's a policy meeting, at the policy committee, only two of the members can run that meeting, the other board members.
They're saying, let's don't have a committee policy meeting anymore, let's have a special board meeting for policy from now on, so the committee.
We've got so much more done without everyone there.
But I don't want to do that with all of our committees, where all of our committee meetings become board meetings.
Right.
There, then there's no.
They're all board.
Then there's no reason to have committees.
So, but.
Just one way.
But you all see, the issue is, we come here and now we can talk for half.
Why did you set up a policy committee now?
Are you done yet, Kevin?
No, I'm talking.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just laughing.
I noticed. So, when we're having a topic that's gonna bring this much discussion up, it's a waste of time to not have all of us there, because it all gets done. That's, so that's my thought, you know?
It's a, yeah, it's a working meeting, but it's a special meeting.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
Just a second, I don't think I've finished. So anytime any of us want to go to a committee meeting, you have to tell the Chair of that meeting, by the way, I'm not on your committee, but I'm coming, because that means it needs to be a special meeting. Because there are three or more.
Only if they're gonna speak, if they're not, they can come into a meeting and sit.
Actually, I talked to the county people and they said they highly un-recommended that. They said it's questionable, because they're in the room, they're hearing the discussion, they're in on it mentally, if they're not saying something. So if a committee member, if any, if a third, fourth, or fifth board member wants to go to any committee meeting, you need to call that person who's in charge of it like a week ahead and say, I want to come, because then that person has to notice it as a special meeting. It's a board member's right as much as it's anybody else's in the room or the community's right to go to any meeting. So I hear you back there saying, well, you know, it's a waste of your time, but we don't have less rights than the public has. And I imagine that after a very few times, people won't be going to them, so they'll be back to regular committee meetings. So really shouldn't be, a third, fourth, fifth board member should not go to a committee meeting, because the clerk of the board said, she goes, just don't do that. She goes, you're creating problems for yourself. So if you want to go, you gotta tell the committee person, Chair, by the way, I want to come, doesn't matter why you want to come, if you want to come and look at the ceiling tiles, it doesn't matter, but if you're coming to the meeting, you gotta tell them, so it's noticed correctly.
Right, and we've already discussed it, that more than two board members want to go to the policy committee meetings, so they have to be noticed as special meetings.
They don't, they don't only need that, they have to have minutes, they have to have minutes that are. Reported, it's, it's another ballgame than a committee, so, I mean, we, it opens.
Actually, from my looking on the, on the Kell website, from the, all the meetings are supposed to have minutes.
Yeah, all the, all the meetings.
Every meeting's supposed to have minutes, and all meeting has to be noticed, and they have to all have minutes, and if a third, fourth, or fifth board member comes, it has to be noticed as a special meeting with one topic.
Right.
So that'll help the people in the community say, okay, I don't need to go, because they're only gonna talk about policy and I'm not gonna go have my head spinning around.
I, I know Bob had something to say, but real, real quick, so if you have a, if you notice this as a special meeting, and you only have two Directors, you not have a quorum and you have to.
You have to dismiss the meeting, you can't have it.
You can't then revert it back to.
Right.
You can't revert it back to a committee meeting.
So if the board member commits their going and you don't go, we're gonna beat you.
Can't be inscribed, okay.
Right.
Bob, I'm sorry.
I cannot for the life of me understand why you would want to walk on a committee meeting. They serve a good purpose, with less than a full board there, they can work efficiently, get more done. They then bring it, and their public is noticed and invited to make comment. They then bring their report to the full board and you sit here in front of the public and have your discussion then. The work's fine.
Well, thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, that's my impression too, is to commit the policy committee, sets some guidelines, passes out stuff, the Board gets final say, you get to vote on it. I mean, that's, and that's progress. You know, you're gonna have to get a special meeting and maybe not show up, and then they're gonna beat somebody up because they didn't show up and they made it not a committee, but if you're gonna have a policy committee, then why, all of a sudden you go, oh, it's exciting, I wanted to be in that. But you're part of it now, after they had their meeting that brought you what was discussed with the public, and now you're involved, you get to vote on it.
Well, actually, I didn't get any notice of this stuff that was gonna happen today. As a board member, I think I should have got this stuff in advance, and I don't have time, you know, at a meeting that's at nine o'clock and we wish we were all out of here a half an hour ago for Taco Tuesday, to sit and really go into, why did you guys think of this, or why do you think of that? What is the state law, because I don't believe that everything in there is covered, I think we're overstepping what state law says. So, Bob, if, I don't go to that kind of. I think that we're, well, because we're, maybe, okay, we're restricting, we're making more restrictions on the board members' attendance than state law demands.
You're actually being more lenient technically, at making 50% of the meeting?
No, we have to be more lenient.
No, we're not, state law says, three meetings in a row, you're out. That's the only, that's about all it says. So we're making peer pressure, we're making a harder thing.
Those are unexcused ones.
No, it's, it's a lot. Now, this one is talking about all absences, our 50% rule, any absences.
Exactly, you're, the reason that's there is because now you're not doing the community any good being up there on the Board.
Exactly.
You're, you're a useless member of the Board. You're not paying attention to the people who've elected you into that position. So why would you want to, for your own morals, why would you want to represent, not represent the people for a position that you're work, you're too, too busy to work?
So.
Okay, I think we have to follow, I think we've got to follow the law and the rules. If, if we have three board members that want to attend, we have to special, notice it, we have to have, notice it as a special meeting. We, at this particular meeting, we, we have a committee that has two board members on it. The third board member wanted to present something to committee, so we're have, we're gonna have three board members there. It's our, it's our duty, it's, it's our fiduciary responsibility to notice the meeting, that's it, it's clear-cut, we have to notice it as a special meeting. Is that not right? Are we not in all in agreement with that?
So are you, and I hear anybody saying?
No, no, we're not in agreement yet, Bob?
We'll have your committee meeting, and then if the Director wants to input something, he doesn't have a board meeting?
Yeah, you can do it afterwards.
If, if the third board member wants to attend a committee meeting and present something.
Then they can attend and sit there and not participate.
Okay, well, if a, okay, if a board member wants to come and present something and participate. No, what?
You, you have a committee meeting that's supposed to take place.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't.
If a Director wants to attend, they can, but there is no reason to say, oh, it has to be a board meeting now.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't think I agree with that, I will check with Betsy on that.
Oh, do so.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, I, no, has that already asked Betsy?
Yeah, I've already asked Betsy, too.
You guys are saying that the, the board members can't go to a meeting if they want to go?
Yeah.
No, that, yes, can.
If he wants to input something, what if he just presented it in a piece of paper and he doesn't have to physically attend and then, and then cause the hassle?
Because every board, board member's right is to go to any meeting they want.
Well, yeah, but then they have to, like you said, they have to, they have to notify it and it changes the nature of the meeting and everything. But if a board member simply wanted to present an idea or a topic of discussion, certainly they could give a piece of paper to a committee member and say, hey, talk about this while you're in there.
They could, but if they want to go and sit and discuss something.
They have the right to go.
They have the right to go.
They do not have the right to go to a committee meeting and discuss something, that's, that's when it would have to become.